Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Rockingham School Board meeting.
It's 5:30 and I'm going to call the Rockingham School Board meeting to order the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of our Constitution. In addition, in my God, in this world, we have to be faithful to justice for all.
Is there any adjustment to the agenda?
The only one I had was about not seeing, but I don't know if you want to.
Yes, we're going to take off Saturday. We talked about green space at 66 Atkinson last time we did the update at that time. Unless there's any induction or anyone has any future for this, say about it. And so we'll remove that. Okay. And I would like to add the placement, let's put it as eight. Yeah, let's do the Vietnam GOW's discussion at Rockingham Library on October 4th. That's just kind of an awareness of it and that kind of thing, but we'll put it down as eight F. Anything else? Okay, communications and public. Jason?
The board is like me, Priscilla.
Um, were they out? Can you hear me?
Right there.
My hair is fine.
Thank you, Priscilla. I come to you folks today asking this board to reinstate Mike Stack to the Bellas Falls Union High School Board. The voters put him here for a reason and frankly, we should not even be here. I'd like to look at all of the things that he's done for the high school. Flexible pathways. He's making sure we are meeting the academic needs of all students. He has started some listening sessions, which we've never done before from staff and stakeholders from all over the town. He's not afraid to hold other board members accountable for their actions. He's committed to giving back to the community via VF trades. He works very respectfully with the school administration and staff on work-based programs with Heather Warriors. You know, and frankly, myself as the high school board chair. Myself and the administration and the board have been working day and night around the clock fighting these PCBs. And you know, we're in a really good spot at the moment and we've done a really good job of getting kids back to hopefully full-time real soon. And Mike has been a big part of that. And if he's not back on the board, it would just be a disruption in what we're trying to do. And again, it'll be almost like we're starting over and we don't want to do that. We have a big budget process coming up, which we're, and that's why we did the listening sessions. So we can hear from the staff, hear what they need in a day. So that we're not just throwing darts at a dartboard, we want to do things correctly. You know, the high school is far better today than it has been over the last few months. And that goes back years. The high school has been neglected for years, almost decades with, you know, when you look around that high school, I'm on the building, the grounds committee. With the ceiling, the walls, you know, it's all in disrepair. Not this doesn't happen overnight. You know, the air conditioning in the gym and auditorium neglected for years. So we're making strides quickly to fix these things. And the board has really been pushing forward with alongside with administration, shoulder to shoulder, working diligently. You know, he does do a very good job with financials. He cares about all of the stakeholders, all of the kids at that school. And frankly, if you vote against Mike, you're really voting against what the administration is trying to do. So I implore you to, to do the right thing. Thank you, Priscilla. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's review and approve the board minutes of September 18th, 2023. Are there any corrections? Okay, if not, we will accept the minutes as, as written. Reports, Jim, you're on.
Oh, yeah.
Does anyone?
Oh, okay. You want to?
Oh, that'd be great.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Jim. This financial report is out of the press. I just want to go through a couple of items, just kind of to show you how we're developing here. And I'm looking on age four. Three quarters of the way down. And this is, I'm looking at tuition 3K early Ed. And I just want to point out to you, it shows a balance of $97,304. Want you to know, I mean, that's, that's probably partially encumbered and we certainly will probably eat in much more than that. So we do have 150, but we'll see, we'll see how that.
I do happen to know that because of the startup of the new program, we have at this point fewer kids than tuition for than more Rockingham kids.
Yeah. That's awesome. Yeah, that's very good.
But I, I don't think it's going to be a $97,000.
No.
But we budgeted for this.
Yes, it is a budget. The other page, page seven. And this one is just a four lines down from the top. And I just want to point out to you that you'll see guidance as a balance of 63,173. And at some point in time, Laura is hoping to hire a guidance person. So we don't know, right now it's available and it's empty. There's no one in that position. And it just gives you, we're really trying to true up here where we are with people and positions. This just shows you that 63 available until Laura hires somebody. All right. On page 12. And this is almost near the middle of the page. And this is a communication internet technology. I'm sorry, Jim. Yes. Does the $63,173 figure, is that the salary or the salary plus benefit? That's the budgeted amount. So if she hired a doctorate level, you'd be over budget. But, but that's a budgeted amount at that time. That's what we put into the budget and it was probably based on the last person that was in that account. Okay, thank you.
I think it's always so.
The line just below that is the benefit.
Yes, sorry, Bill, I misunderstood.
Very next line.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So thank you. Someone's looking at the next line item. Thank you.
Yep, so, so to be very, if I could, just that whole little grouping there is all guidance. So the total figure of 97 to 67 is, is what that person cost total.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for asking that though. So page 12. And I'm looking somewhat in the middle of the page where it says communication internet technology. I just want to point out to you, we budgeted $1,500. And, and there was a reason for that because you aren't going to see much in variances with copiers or technology or any of those items. But you'll notice that we're over expended year-to-date shows 3253. No clue right now why.
It looks like a credit.
Yes, yes, it is a credit. Sorry, it is a credit.
It's a credit.
It is a credit, but.
Why?
Well, I just, I'm not sure whether it was something.
Credit?
I know we do, but we don't on the expense side, you know? If there's one on the expense side, something's wrong. And so we just have, we're tracking down why that is.
Would it have been some money for any additional somewhere else?
I don't think so. I think it was probably just something, something came back that was misplaced.
Okay.
On page 19, just say, so three quarters of the way down debt service. You'll see there's 802,000. And again, we just got the billing for that. But, but you certainly are going to consume all of that 800,000. So I, and the only reason I mention it is because if you go to the bottom line where it says 2.2 million available. You know, that's going to be much less and you're probably looking at when we get all said and done, probably 100,000 available. Now we will say, as, as I went through this also, we've got some wrinkle with our worker comp. The worker comp is set up so that as we expend payroll. Our, our cost is maybe 10 cents per $100 for administrative and teacher salaries. So we budgeted that it will come out as a cost as we put payroll out. So. Our total cost to the insurance company is about 150,000 in total. And it may increase a little bit because there's a true-up of that as we expend in our federal projects. But certainly it looks like it's over for some reason right now. The worker comp piece, we're going to have to do some investigation and find out what went astray. But other than that, I, I think you're okay and it looks like we're, we're. Jim? I just had a point of interest question on the $802,000 debt service payment. Yes. What's the principle on that? What's the big figure? The principal, it, it may be, I think it separates it, Bill, wait a minute. Debt service.
Yeah, the two right above that, it's, it's got them separated and one, at least Saxons River.
Interest, interest on bond.
And of interest.
Yep, so the interest bill is, is a couple of lines above and it's 79,149. For one of them and then 1922 for the other. Is that right? No. I think for the bar.
The 802 ends up if you have.
79,145.
723 principal.
Yeah.
The overwhelming amount is principal.
Yes, sure. It's, principal is probably 723.
Yeah.
So the majority of that is principal. You find that one, Bill? I see the 720.
Yeah, and right above the 802, Bill, the two figures right above the 802.
Okay, but I'm just curious what the schedule is. Is this a 20-year schedule, 10-year schedule? What's the big amount that we're, that this is? You're working on? I think that 723 is what you're clipping off for principal. And I don't think, for some reason, I don't think you have that many years left. You have a debt schedule, Bill? I was just curious what we're paying on interest and what the schedule is for diminishing this debt. I'll, I'll forward. Just curious, that's all. I'll send out the, the debt schedule just so you can see it and. And that will give me the large figure? Yes. The base figure? And the number of years that are left. Okay, thank you. We get that looked out.
You handed that out when we were doing our budget last year, so you'll probably, we just need a good just reminder at this point.
It was a 20 or 30-year, it's only one bond, it's one issue, it's for the renovation to this building.
And do you remember, Jim, what that figure roughly was?
The principal amount, I think, is the same every year.
Right.
I think it's a fixed principal bill and of course, as, as the balance goes down, the interest will be a little bit less each year. So it's going to be a big nut for at least 20 years, Chris, right? I mean. Right, it was 10 and a half million. And that was, we probably took it down in 13.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's cool.
A very, a very good.
That's exactly it.
Any other questions on the expense side?
Is, you know, page 17, there's still kind of a, this is a line after Central Elementary School in South Grove. And it's this salary figuring technicians.
This is facility technician.
Yeah, we budgeted 101, I think there's two custodians.
Yeah.
And we, year-to-date it says 44. And then 57 is the, is the balance and then you've got 119,000 as a, as a. So that doesn't make any sense. I think this came out the last one we looked at, but.
That's Saxons River. That's at Saxons River.
It's at Saxons River. The, it looks like it's the custodian line. Something's off.
Something's off.
Right.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, Laura, Laura, I'm reading that there's something off on it, so we'll get back and look at it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, for pointing that out.
Principles are given, given, just so the board is aware, given the principles. This year, like wherever you have the E is and everything and everyone going through it right now and updating to clean up a lot of this stuff.
I've kind of finished, I'm probably 99%. I'm going to send, resend it out and we'll give it to Andy to do the final 1%. That he'll find. And then we'll be done. We'll be locked and loaded, ready to go on.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for all your doing.
Okay, this is just the revenue side. We're, this month, we will ask Henry for tuition students. And we will be billing those tuitions out for receiving districts, attending districts. And. Just so you know, this figure that you have in front of you, this 9 million. 546. With the 700,000 that you used in surplus funds, it matches the 10 to 46. So. The last sheet that I have is. So the budget should parallel especially the payroll who we've got in place and. Take a copy of it. So as we prepare the budget. The sheet that I'm sending around is. Kind of the projecting, the projected of where we are right now. And the only reason I say that is I hold open positions within a budget. So if there is a para that's open position that we're going to fill, that's set aside as a reserve in this budget. So this just shows you right now, you know, we're $90,000 below what we had budgeted. Now, keep in mind, as, as we get and roll this forward, you're going to probably end up 12% increase as a minimum on that Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance. You're going to be ratcheted up a certain number, a step on the teacher's contract. And whatever, whatever you want to put in for increase in, in salaries. And the support staff is in there for whatever step and percentage increase they'll get. It's not in here, but it will be as we push forward. So you'll have a clean idea of where you're going. I, I think you're going to see less movements this year. You know, your health insurance, Jim, do you remember? The, the, not the health insurance, but the property and liability and it said, what in the heavens name are you doing? Because it was such an increase and it was all over the place. We're pretty locked and loaded. I, I think I put in 5% into the budget. And that's probably a good number to use. As I said to you, the copiers, you're not going to see a lot of change. Telephone, you're not going to see a lot of change. You know, as we, one of the things, Andy's got to look at SIR monies and what we're using for people and how that transforms back into the budgets and into the SU. So there's still a lot of work to do in that area and that side. But this gives you kind of a glimpse at where you're going with your budget. Yeah? 1% contractual increase will the teachers be getting this coming year?
Uh, it's to be negotiated.
All right, that's right. Yeah, we're at that, we're at that stage. Got it, thank you. And I just want to say, my hope is that, that both the teachers and the boards would agree to some increase because. I guess I would say to you, and I've, I've never run into this, where you would go two years out and say, well, we're ready to sign now. And, and have it go back retroactively. Not something I'm familiar with. And I just think, I don't know about that because you're, you're asking taxpayers to support an increase from the previous year. And I just think that may be something that you, you and the superintendent and administration want to discuss. So it's going to sour support. Well, you know, it just.
We're, we're negotiating for next year right now, Annie Lynn, we're not, we don't have that situation at this time.
All right. All right, hey, we're moving ahead and.
Any other questions for Bill? Okay, thank you, Jim.
All right.
She had also the information.
Okay.
Principal reports, we'll start with.
Sure, happy to start. So we have 78 students. School's off to an awesome start. We had a circus residency with Brian Wenderly, who was a former SRAS student. So it's always awesome to have former students back. And as I had shared earlier, really the focus was around community building, teamwork, perseverance, developing that growth mindset. And we did all of that. The family performance was awesome, everyone had a great time. So it was great to bring the community together. All of our fall benchmark assessments and diagnostic assessments are complete. We're using the data to inform obviously instruction, but instructional groups, both within the classroom and instructional groups for interventions. Our I L T work is off to a super strong start. On our first in-service day, we spent the day really building a shared understanding of what accountable talk is. How it impacts students positively and what it's going to look like in our building. Super important to pull everyone together so that everyone has a similar understanding of what it is. And then can build that work from the ground up. We'll continue with that work as for our next in-service day. And that's really going to be the focus of our Think It, Speak It, Write It. So this is the speak it part. And so we're taking off bits and pieces of that as we move forward. I did want to say, and I should have started with this and I didn't. But today is National School Custodians Day. So a big shout out to our two custodians at Saxons River, Bert Lawrence and Sarah Lawrence, for really making SRAS shine. Let's see, oh, this is a big one. On Wednesday, we will have a student-led open house. And what that means is obviously we'll open our doors to families, but students will be really running the show. So teachers will give students a checklist, if you will, of things to do in the classroom. And students will bring their, their family around the classroom and then explore the different parts of our building, visiting specialists and, and whatnot. So that'll be every evening and we're going to have a book giveaway as well.
What was that, Lauren?
Wednesday. Wednesday, yep, from five to six. I think Andy had this in one of his reports, but our second and third graders will be headed down to the Miller Farm. That's where we're getting our organic milk from. It's really awesome, by the way. And I'm not a milk lover, but it's really good milk. And so they'll have a day of really learning, meeting the farmers, meeting the cows, dairy education. They'll be doing scavenger hunts and all sorts of great things. And then the Miller Farm has invited other classes down throughout the year as well. So looking forward to that. And I know I'm supposed to be short here, but we do still have, as Jim mentioned, an open position for school counselors. Still no luck on that, although we do keep, keep searching. And one more shout out to my staff as a whole. Their implementation of responsive classroom practices has really been stellar as we kick off our school year. And every time I visit a classroom, I just, I just want to video them because it's really that good. And so cheers to them. Any questions?
Any questions from, go ahead.
I don't have a question about that, but before I forget it again. Several meetings ago, you weren't here and you sent us your report. On the computer and the section you did on your staff evaluations.
Yep.
In that report is actually exactly what we're looking for, what we kept asking for. So I know we, we're sort of thrashing around for that, but. That was, in my mind, exactly what the board was looking for in terms of the principal reporting out on evaluation sheet. So it's, it's there and electronically somewhere, but I kept forgetting it.
That was the night she was starting her.
My class, yeah.
Right. Anyone else? I had one. How are you handling the open position and taking care of those needs?
Uh, it's busy. My days are busy, yes. Uh, it's busy. My days are busy. Yes, um, very busy. So. Uh, our school counselor also did all the five oh four and EST, um, plans and paperwork. As well as, of course, met with students, um, but we're not providing, um. Second step curriculum at this point, the SEL, uh, where she went into the classroom one day, we could not able to do that in my schedule. So, um, all of the student needs, um, are coming through my office and when our school-based clinician is there. Um, he, he assists, uh, but it is very, very, um, very busy.
Very busy. Okay. All right. Well, we wish you luck with that.
Yes.
All of us. Okay, uh, anyone else? Okay, Carrie, you're up.
Okay. Everybody hear me okay? Okay. So we too have been very busy at Central, like Laura was saying. So our attendant, I mean, our, um. Enrollment right now, we are up actually two students. So kindergarten is at twenty seven students. First grade is at twenty seven students. Second grade is at twenty eight. Third grade is at seventeen. We only have the one third grade and then fourth grade is at thirty two. And so we now have a total of one hundred thirty one students. So like Laura is saying, we are also working on the responsive classroom work and a shout out to all the teachers. It's our first six weeks of the first six weeks. And we're doing a lot of social emotional work to support the students and families and build the classroom and school communities. Uh, it's great been to seeing all the morning meetings, watching the beginning of the year actions turn into routines. And I want to thank everybody for their efforts. Um, it's been a overall great six weeks. It's been busy. Um, so we're gearing up for the next step into all the really hard learning now soon. So I did share out links to, we've had a lot of positive PR. We appreciate that. As Laura was mentioning, the farm. Um, the Miller Farm project with the organic milk, that's been some of ours, has also been harvesting. There's a few other things there. So I did send links. It's been on the newsletters and on our social media sites too. So it's been great to see a lot of PR. Around those fun things. Um, I also shout out as National Custodian Day to Ken Lawrence and Sully. Um, Arthur Sullivan for helping to keep our school clean and really working hard for that. And we were excited now, as mentioned before, we have our three-year-old and four-year-old preschool programs in session. So everybody's back in now and we are now going from three years old up to basically ten years old. So it's great. And so just so people are aware, we do have a bus evacuation drill this week. So. The students are watching a video to just kind of see what it's about. And they will practice because even if your student is not riding a bus, they all take a bus at some point in time for a field trip. Um, so we need all students to be aware of how to be safe on a bus. And just like Laura was saying too about the, um, beginning of the year assessments, we were. Only like a couple of students were absent. We're just finishing those up. And just I do need to do a quick shout out to Cindy Rounds and the whole CES staff. We had five teachers out. Sadly, this sickness is really hitting us. Um, so we were able to scramble and cover all the classrooms today. Unfortunately, we have PE's a big hit too, so we're not able to do that. And we have Bike Week that we had to cancel this week, which is disappointing for so many. So. We're working on that, but we do have a lot of illnesses that we're trying to cover. So I appreciate everybody's flexibility in getting that done. And the rest, basically, we'll talk about sidewalks and things afterwards. So any questions?
One thing could you clarify? I, I know that Laura mentioned, um, the second and third graders were going to the farm. And it's, some would go later. So are you planning to have all of your students go at some time? This year, or is this just going to be limited to the second and third? And if so, why?
The good news is we put it out to everybody and especially K N one was very interested. Right now as an SU, we have. Limited for this particular date on October nineteenth to be just second and third graders from all of the WNESU elementary schools. Uh, but the plan will be further down the line is to have any other classrooms that want to visit, have another chance to visit too. And this is in, um, association with the NOFA, uh, the Northeast Organic Farmer Association. We're helping us to sponsor this as well. I can't hear anything.
Average daily attendance of two hundred and twenty-one students, which is ninety-three percent. So hoping to. Only go up from there. It's been great. Been a great first weeks, uh, six weeks of school. Uh, we finished our first round of MAPS testing officially. All makeups are complete. So we use those scores, uh, in the classrooms, but also we created. Um, our seventh and eighth grade teams and also our sixth grade interventionists, uh, spend time creating some intervention groups. That they'll be, um, meeting with students in groups from six to eleven students. Uh, during our intervention time, which is we have thirty-one minutes a day, uh, five days a week. The students will meet with those specific teachers and either ELA or math. This Friday, uh, in celebration of our first six weeks of school, uh, BFMS, we're doing our first, uh, Unity Day. So this is a whole day dedicated to social emotional learning. Um. We're planning on it this Friday. As long as the weather holds out, we'll have a rain date of next Friday, the thirteenth. But, uh, what this is all about is BFMS students will be split into four teams. They'll compete in a variety of activities through four stations. Um, each team will spend about an hour at each station. Two of them will be located up at the rec. Um, and the other two will be here at the school and then we're going to switch halfway through the day after lunchtime. The goal of the day is to have fun and to get to know others in the BFMS community that you may not get to regularly see or re, and also to reconnect with old teachers and friends. Um, there are, each team is made up of a fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade advisory. So we kind of put all the students together. Um, almost like a, you know, like I said, just a way to kind of get to know students who have been around a while and get to know those new students and. For some of those eighth grade students, seventh grade students that have been here since the get-go, they'll get a chance to reconnect with some of their teachers that'll be running, uh, some stations that they had from fifth and sixth grade. Um, there'll be no regular classes on that day. Um, we encourage students to plan and dress in layers, bring a water bottle and a small backpack. Um, or lunch for, or lunch or we are obviously offering bag lunch as well. Um, so this is something that we hope to start doing. Uh, once a trimester, that's kind of like a celebration and just to kind of, you know, remember what. Community is all about and building community and that it's not just all about books and pencils and everything else that, um, I think the social emotional piece. Is something that we've lacked, uh, specifically since, since COVID. So. Um, this will be our first shot at it. So we'll see, we'll see how it goes. We're pretty excited. I know the kids are excited and all jacked up about it. Um. We presented it to them last week and, uh, we got good feedback from them. The teachers are excited. Uh, to run various stations. So we'll, we'll see how it goes and we're looking forward to reporting that out at our next meeting. So. Um, we're going to have our open house, uh, on Thursday, October twelfth. It'll be here at the middle school, obviously from four to six. We'll open up the doors to. The community, try to get as many people to come in, students and families as possible. Um. Teachers will have work on display, also be, uh, available to kind of let. Um, families know what they're working on curriculum-wise up to this point in time. Um, we'll also have a plan on having Chromebooks available in each room. Um, where you go through signup changes to kind of get families to, to sign up for our parent teacher conferences. First rounds of those will be in, in early November. See here. Yeah. And then of course, just shout out like everybody else said to our custodians, um, National Custodian Day. Uh, this, all the kids created in their advisories, thank you cards, um, provided that custodians some nice sweet treats and candy and stuff like that today for. For all their hard work in our buildings, obviously, uh. Especially here at the middle school, I'm happy the way that everything will stay in and out. Um, you know, it's crazy to, to see, you know. Simple things like the bathrooms and how clean they are at the beginning, uh, at the beginning of every morning, uh, before the presentation. So it's a product thing. Uh, the environment looks good, the community and the climate come along with it. So. Um, that's all I have. Everything else is, I sent you guys and I have a board.
Okay. Any questions for Henry?
I have a question for Henry for the open house that's scheduled October twelfth from four to six. Is there an auditorium presentation piece or is this just classroom visits?
This is just classroom visits.
Okay.
Yeah, trying to get the teachers to come in more often. Um. Now something last year, we did our panoramic climate survey. Uh, that was one of our lower marks was bringing in the community. So. Trying to get them to come into different classrooms and see what their kids are doing. And also encourage them to, you know, if you're a fifth grade family, go into some of the sixth grade classrooms too. And see what, you know, people you have coming up. Um, so that was kind of the, the plan behind that.
Would board members be welcome always? Okay. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you always. You'll make us feel welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, and the. Pardon, there are no other questions. We'll go on to unfinished old business, update on master projects, including the CES kitchen. And the roof project. So Andy, do you want to take that?
Yeah, let me just pull up one, I'm going to calm down. So, um. So we, uh, um. The roof projects are, I'm staying, going up there. Sorry, he sent me a report recently.
Well, Andy's looking here. More than welcome to come to our open house too. It's the. Open doors, computer floor.
That's Wednesday, five to six.
Right.
This Wednesday.
Yes, this Wednesday.
Comes up quick. I think we've already had a whole hunt of school.
So I know the project for Saxon's River is slated.
Yep, the final, so the final plans were, um, set and, uh, it was going to go out to bid was my last. Communication and, um. It was forecasted prior to the start of this full year that the work would take place, um, over beginning anyway, the December break. Um, and then last for about a month. So not really too much of a disruption at all. The main offices would move to the old building and. Yeah, it'd be quick and easy.
I, I apologize. He buried it in with a, with another email. So I had that right, had to pull it out. So. Um, as far as Central Elementary, um, with the kitchen, um, most of the bids are in. They're waiting on a couple of kitchen equipment vendor prices. Um, and they should be ready to, we review that by the end of this week. The, um.
Did we need to do anything else for that, Andy?
No.
Or else that, because we already approved.
Right.
Approved that.
Yes. Um, it turned into a little bit bigger project than I think what Harley envisioned, only because the minute you start back holes in places and. And moving power and plumbing, it gets a little, little bigger. Um, so that was of that. Um, the, the roofs are, um. Um, they're bundled together with the high school roof, um, with the one vendor looking to do all of it. Um, with the PCB issue, um, some of that got put on hold. Also, these two buildings still need to be tested. So Steve wasn't pushing full force on that. Um, we got back as the community knows some good, um. Um, we got back some good news on the high school as far as, uh, the PCBs with the, uh, machines. Um, the numbers have come down dramatically and they came down in the gym and auditorium area, um. Almost below the school action level. They're still a little high, um, one fifty. Um, so it's something that, um. They're doing another, uh, round of testing, uh, hopefully this week. Um, and then they'll start looking at source, um, pieces. But, um, the reason of bringing that all up. Is one of the, um, hypothesis that they have going is that the PCBs may be in the paint on the roof decking. In the high school. And so the concern would be, um, would, would doing the roof disrupt those PCBs? And, um, in talking with our consultants, uh, on Friday, uh, Steve was there and they had a conversation and it. Um, it appears that that issue would not disrupt the PCBs and, and what they think. So, um. So we're beginning to move forward, um. To get those bids out for all the roofing, uh, projects. So all of that is scheduled still on to be done this year. So. Uh, complete the roof here, complete roof at Central, um, will also be done. Um, and then, um.
Is the, the middle school roof is done, isn't it?
They did the auditorium.
Yeah.
So we immediately addressed the auditorium because that's where we were having a waterfall.
Okay.
And we thought that was the immediate, um, we wanted to get that done. And, and the way your roof here is, it's. It's like a few different roofs. So it's not all one big roof. And so you can do them in sections. And so, uh. So we decided to do that and then hold on on the others. And I think that also has to do with the material. So one person's, um, the roof for the central and here and the high school are all the same. Um, we're still moving ahead with, um, our, um, network infrastructure and with the, um. With the, uh, cameras and the doors, um, most of them are ready to go. We're just waiting, uh, to get everything online so we can push. Uh, we're looking at in November, uh, probably launch date because we have to work out some processes. We're getting keys back from folks. Because they won't use their keys to get into the main door anymore. Uh, but we also have to distribute the, the cards. And we want to make sure everyone's coding correctly, that they all work before we take their, the keys away because that also a little distracting. So. So those are, those are the, the big pieces I have to.
Uh, any questions? Okay, we have, uh, the next one up is update the capital improvement. And I think this involves like the stairs out here that we had said, we had asked about getting done. And then there's a, that small area next to Central School that we'd said we wanted them to see about going ahead on that. We need an update on where we are on that, those things and anything else that we're planning.
So as far as the, um. The issue at, uh, Central today, um. Carrie and I and Rick Schuman, uh, met with, um, Scott Pickup. Uh, and Andy, I didn't get his last name though from, um.
VPW.
Yeah, DPW.
Oh, yeah, I think yes.
Um, and so we, we had a really good discussion. Uh, they are going to be, uh, repaving Church Street, uh, next summer. And they're looking to expand the sidewalks on Church Street by about a half, uh, half a foot each. Or four and a half. They got to get up to five feet. Um, and they have to bring all the, um. Curbs into ADA compliance. Um, and so they're looking at trying to, how much we can bundle together with that whole project. Uh, so today we talked about, um, what we could do for a patch, um, in the interim and, um. Andy committed that, uh, he believes he can get a, a team in there, uh, next week, uh, when we're doing an in-service day. They can come in and, um, not just do a patch job, but actually. Cut the cement out, dig down and add in some more cement. So the patch would last as opposed to just coming in with some hot. You know, some asphalt and it only lasting the, the winter. Um, but we. Um, started really talking about redoing that little parking area. Uh, where, where the teachers parking.
On the back of the school.
No, in front of the school.
School street extension.
Um, and the issue with drainage and how the water coming off that hill. Um, so, um, I, I briefly spoke with Steve today. Uh, we're setting up a meeting for next week. We'll see if you come out and, um, take a look at it. Um, to give us some ballpark numbers to bring back to you all if you want to do an RFP for it. Um, but it looks like it's talking about, um, maybe putting in a couple of new culverts. Um, as in part of the parking area, which is ours. Uh, because what happens is the water comes off that hill and then it comes right into the parking area and on a really. Bad rain day, it could actually come into the school. So adding some culverts there would help, uh, to divert water there. Um, and it's better to do that if you're digging up the asphalt, put new asphalt down and relay it all at the same time. Um, and then, um, looking at the potential of, um. Looking at the front, maybe eliminating those front stairs that go up. Um, and just having things on the side, maybe two ramps on the sides. Um, part of that is because they can push the curb back in a little bit more, which would give you a bit, a bit more for a fire lane. Um, and a bus drop off. And so, um. Want to, uh, potentially get an engineer in there. So it's, you know, a, a crack that's deteriorating started, you know, becoming a bigger deal. want to, uh, potentially get an engineer in there, so it's, you know, a, a crack that's deteriorating started, you know, becoming a bigger deal, but, um, also looking at again, all the ADA compliances, because where the, um, where the handicap parking space is, the, um, the extra area that you need to, uh, allow for handicap space is on the wrong side, it's on the driver's side, it's supposed to be on the passenger side, because that's typically where, um, if you had a wheelchair lift, that's where that would be, so it's on, um. But, um, also the curb now, after they've done the, um, asphalt is a good almost eight inches and they believe that whole thing should come down and be lowered, if not all be just a ramp for ADA compliance and that would, uh, eliminate a lot of that, so. Um, so more information on that, but, um, that, it sounds like that, um, that piece, uh, the crack and the, and the part around the stairs will be fixed as of next Tuesday, is what we're, we're projecting. Um, stairs here, I don't, I did not talk to Rick about that, so I don't know where they are as far as bidding that out or, or looking at it, I don't have an update on that. Did check in with Rick today about the stairs, he said he was reaching out to me more than this week.
Okay.
Because we haven't gone and asked him yet, so he wants to get somebody to come out and take a look at him so we can get that going.
Okay, sounds good. Um, the ramp at Central there, right now, um, would you, are they parking on the street or are they pulling in there so they can come up that ramp for handicap?
Well, so the, the, I forget all the terms, but the, the little divot for someone to be able to access that ramp is actually a very small one that is on the west side, if you're looking at the school and the stairs going in, a little curved divot is right there on the right-hand side of you where the long ramp is on the left side.
Well, I was wondering was whether somebody who was handicapped needed it, whether they pulled in next to that ramp so they could use it, or whether they ended up going all the way down around.
They can't pull in there.
They can't pull into, there's no space there to pull in.
And, and you have curves.
Inside.
We have a curb.
So, um, so if, if, we want to get, you know, someone in there who can, uh, update, so you're doing it right for ADA compliance. We talked about actually moving the sidewalk that goes right up on the school over to the playground and actually relocating that to that west side of, uh, from the church across, um, School Street, um, extension. Only because then if there's a car that's turning off a church on the school street, you don't have kids that are crossing in front of the, the car, um, so, so there's some deliberate, like, let's do it right kind of conversation. Um, and, um, so like I said, um, Steve's gonna, um, go out there next week with, with myself and I'll have Rick over there and then we'll get them together with the town and I think, you know, we can come back and, you know, um, you know, I don't know if it would be with engineer and getting the whole thing done, are we talking a couple hundred thousand or, you know, or more type of thing? But it might be something to look at if we have reserves, you know, setting aside or, or some of the monies we've already set aside, reallocating them to something else. Because I think that area could need some attention.
Any questions? Okay, is there anything else for capital improvement that we need to be aware of? And we kind of did the sidewalk discussion under that as well, but. Okay, on the update on, update of buildings, um, informational possible action, I, when I looked at the, um, sign there next to the, um, uh, stairs that we just talked about, I was noticing how really dirty the top of the building looked and wondering about power washing. I think that probably is on our schedule at some point, whether we could maybe move it up or, you know, what the board's pleasure was.
Are you talking about Central?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
It's on the schedule.
Yeah, and I, I didn't speak with, with, uh, Carrie about that, I mean, you're getting to a point like, do you want to do it in the fall or you want to wait to do it in the spring? I mean, that's kind of back, you know, um, I, depends, I think, who you speak with, what their recommendations would be, because, um, you know, my, my worry about doing it in the fall is if you do a power wash and chip off a whole bunch of paint and you want to go the winter without, you know, that protection, so.
Okay. Well, I just noticed how dirty it looks, and cobwebs and that kind of stuff that were there, so.
Yeah, Carrie and I spoke about it this summer, uh, uh, and which is why we got it on the plan so that at least we didn't get taken care of, so.
Okay. All right, and any other questions on update from the principals or from board members? Okay, so we're on new business for discussion and action. First one is the BFUHS board vacancy. We do have a letter of interest that I'll read first, which is, hi Andy, please accept this email as my request to be considered for the recently vacated position on BFUHS school board for Rockingham representative. I became well aware of this opening through a story reported in the bottom of a reformer. I spoke with Nicole Barnett this morning and she stated in an email to you as superintendent and to personal Lambert as Rockingham School Board Chair would be the starting point to seek appointment to the open position. I feel like I would be well qualified for this position, I have lived in the community for most of my life, minus the years in college at Indian Navy. I graduated from BFUHS, all of my children have graduated from BFUHS and I have worked at the school for twenty-five years. I currently work as a teacher at the Wyndham Regional Career Center, a CTE center that serves BFUHS students. Please reach out to me if you would like to further discuss my qualifications for the opening, thank you for considering me for the position, Chris Hodgson. Um, that's the only letter I received, I do know that, um, it was spoken to during, um, uh, communications also, um, so I guess it's into, it's up to the board what they would like to do at this point.
Well, is there another candidate?
Well, this is the only letter I got, um, it was spoken to during communication and public comments, but that's the only letter that I have received.
Okay, we're reading Mr. Stack as to why he does not apply for the position.
Thank you, so.
Yeah, Mike Stack and I'm here to speak to you folks and answer any questions that you may have regarding my reapplying for the position, um, I'll get my, uh, my perspective, which is, can you hear me okay? Is everybody hearing me okay? Uh, I guess what I think I bring to the table is kind of unique, I bring both the hard skills, the quantitative skills that are necessary to understand.
Um, uh, the question was why had you not applied?
Why have I not applied?
Yes.
Uh, I have made it clear through my board chair and I think through an email to, to Andy that I also wanted my name considered. I thought it was actually, I thought my name was kind of beyond the.
So I, I do apologize, I, I thought that everyone was included on that email, so if I neglect it, so I do apologize, Mike did send an email saying he was interested in, in the position.
Do you want to read that to us, please? When I made that, um, agenda on Friday, there had not been any, so.
Again, I, I apologize, because I thought it.
That's okay, I'm, I'm just letting the board know, I, so I had made it out with this informational discussion and that's why it says possible action, because by that night we had Chris Hodgson's letter, so, um, at that point.
But apparently, Mike.
And, and we're waiting to see what, you know, what there is there. As we, that was not sent to me.
I'd like somebody to strengthen you. Mike, do you remember when you sent that? Do you remember when you sent it?
I don't, sorry. I think I can summarize what I said, basically, if you want that, if you want to.
I'd like you to read what you sent in.
I, I, I guess my concern is it may be buried in a string of emails that I've got to go through the whole string of emails to try and find, so we may be here a while, so I, um.
The email was advanced touch the morning after our last meeting, uh, because the board had asked me, I was on the, um, on, on a screen and, uh, I was asked if I would reconsider joining the board. I asked for twenty-four hours to make that decision. And I didn't have to do it the morning.
Why were you feeling like you needed time at that point?
Because I needed to digest what had happened that night in terms of holding the board member accountable for the actions that were the basis for which I had decided to leave.
How were you finding yourself accountable?
I think this is.
How am I, hold myself accountable?
Okay, let's, let's get into what the, let's get into, let's get into what the board wants to do, okay? What, what is the board's, um, pleasure tonight? Do you want to interview one vote? What do you want to do? It's up to the board.
Well, I, I think both of the, they are two candidates and they're both here and behoove us to fill this position as quickly as possible to the high school's sake. Would they mind, so.
I would think we give each, each person an opportunity to say something to us and, uh, then, then take an action, but I think I have a question about, uh, because of this, this argument and particularly the way you're acting right now, I'm concerned about you being part of the voting.
Um, I didn't vote last time and let's see how this comes out, okay? Um, what we're, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we are fair to both candidates, whether I accept both candidates. It's up to the board to decide that and if the board wants to, um, interview both of them, that's fine, I got one application, so that's, that's where I'm from, but Andy is telling me that he got one and so that's fine, as long as the board wants to and we can ask them, ask them for their reasons, I want to give them equal opportunity to respond if, if that's what the board wants to do, and it sounds like that's what the board wants to do.
So, so I apologize again.
That's okay.
Mike, Mike is sent just saying that he's rescinding his, um, letter of resignation, uh, based on the action that was taken and would like to be considered, um, back and would wait for the direction, um, of what needs to be taken. Um, when I, when we notified Rockingham of the vacancy, there was no indication from Rockingham that anyone needed to apply, and so therefore when Mike hit off an email saying he was going to be here tonight, I took that as it, his wanting us to speak to the board to his reasons why, it's also why I told Mr. Hodgson that the board, there was a board meeting tonight and he was welcome to attend as well, because there may be questions, so I, I, we had not advertised that people had to apply, so I think that's why I ended up not forwarding that on, on Mr. Stack, because I didn't know, because I didn't, I didn't know of other, I had also heard other folks were going to be here tonight to potentially, um, ask for that seat. So, uh, the way the statute reads, it's that, um, Rockingham has thirty days to appoint someone, in other districts, they've actually said, we want to post and have people apply. Um, I, you know, there was some question of that Rockingham had, you know, why, why, and Rockingham posted, and that's right, given some community members is, the statute doesn't say you have to post. And so therefore, if people were interested, they could either send us a letter so we could get it there, or they could be here tonight, so.
Um, and, and that's okay, that's what the board wants, we have been doing, doing the, um, uh, procedures of having somebody send a letter and then we have been interviewing. But, and, you know, it's totally the board's decision what they want to do, if they have you tonight, we have two candidates, if they want to wait till the next meeting to have people apply, it's totally up to them. It's not my decision, I'm at their pleasure, Bill.
I am in favor with, uh, what Chris was saying, give each uh, of the two candidates five minutes to present their case for being the best choice and then we vote tonight. I will not be at the next meeting, as you know, and I will not be available via Zoom, so the five of us are here, I think it's our responsibility to act on this.
Okay. Um, I've heard Chris, Bill, Caitlin, you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, what we did last time was we had some questions and I'm thinking that we might have one or two candidates tonight that you wanted to hear from, I went back and listened to see what we asked last time. I can use basically those same types, types of questions, or we can give them a specific amount of time.
I'm just giving a specific amount of time.
Okay, so.
But I, I would like to be able to follow up.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so I guess the board would like to give you each five minutes. And here from you, um, you want us to just trust what is our help.
Rock paper towel to you.
I don't think I'll need five minutes, um, again, I think most people here know me, again, if not, again, Chris Hodgson, a long time staff member at Bellas Falls Unit High School, currently working as a teacher at the Wyndham Regional Career Center, teaching math and in their, um, in our newly opened aviation careers program, which is exciting and fun, um, I'm really enjoying that. Um, as far as this open position goes, uh, when I became aware that the position was available, um, um, it kind of, um, resonated for me, just the need to, um, for community members with, um, the time, the energy and the skills to participate in the board processes, processes that exist within a community to, to step forward and say, if you're interested, I'm making myself available. Um, so I've got a lot of years in education, I've got a lot of years of building budgets at the high school, of working through policy process. Um, and so I'm presenting myself as a potential candidate for the open position. Um, I would, um, be an enthusiastic member, but at the same time, if, if you decide to go with somebody else, then that's the way it goes and then I'll continue to keep my peace to myself, so whichever works out for you, I'm, I'm here to be an asset in whatever way you can.
Great, um, and as I was starting earlier, I feel like I'm a unique, uh, board member because I have both the the soft skills and the, the hard skills, the quantitative skills that are required to understand this complex education funding system, um, I've done a lot of work, I've gained a lot of insights. But I think most important is that soft piece, which is my ability to listen and to interact with people. I know what I don't know and there's a lot I don't know, and so the way I approach things is the way that I approached the listening session that I developed or I encouraged us to follow, which is gaining information and pulling in uh, data inputs from all stakeholders, the school, the community, local businesses, students. Um, it helps us make better decisions and that's, my approach is to listen first. Do the research, dig into the data, bring numbers to the decision and then make good decisions to help the students. One thing that I talked about is wanting to improve outcomes for all students, make sure that we're meeting the academic needs of all students. So I think here that, I think that I'm anti-academic. Just because my nonprofit, which is how I introed into the school. Bellas Falls Trades was focused on the students that were not college bound. But I don't think we can ignore any of our students and. I was lucky enough to start working with the likes of Mark Evo. And he helped me to understand, be careful if you push this agenda too hard, people are going to think you're anti-academic. And by no means I am, I, those students that are advanced placement students, those are student athletes. We support the physical sports in the school, but we also need to support those academic athletes also. So in a nutshell, I, I feel like I bring a kind of a unique combination. That you don't usually get into any people with the soft and the, and the hard skills and I think that's. And my approach to dealing with other board members, I think is, is. I think Cheryl Trammell commented in the other, right? Something that she really highlights as a, an important aspect of being a board, contributing board member.
Um, questions for either one? Of course.
Sure, so I'll, I'll cut right to the chase, please. Yeah, I feel like you've done a lot of homework about being a board member and yet you quit in a half.
Yeah.
And here we are, because you quit in a half. And now everybody's being inconvenienced, Mr. Terry vaguely threatened us that we. Might vote against his candidate, which I didn't appreciate. So, what's the deal? I mean, I understand getting upset, of course, but the quitting part I don't get. And I don't really want to get into the. Details of that, but it's like, is that how you respond?
That's, I think that's a fair question and I actually, in the letter that I sent to Andy, said. If my continuing to be a part of the board would make the situation worse from a trauma standpoint. I want what's best for the board, so my decision stands and that is for me, there's certain lines that you don't cross. And specifically, I think as a board member, the most important thing that we can do is model behavior. For the students, for the schools, for the community, so when I saw that the board was not taking what I thought was the appropriate action. I really was presented with a conundrum. You know, you have a hierarchy of your values and your principles and this costs one line. And so I spoke out and I, I agreed to, because I weren't going through it. You're lucky to have a great reporter that covered it in detail and laid out, I think, the chronicle of the situation, so. I agree with you, this is a real waste of time, but at the same time. When it's something as significant as I thought it was, I think we have to deal with that and we have to call things out. And while I'm a good listener, I'm not afraid to call out my fellow board members. And when that line is crossed, I'll do it and if, if push comes to shove, you know, I'll make the ultimate sacrifice, so that's kind of how I felt. What I did was. Fair, a fair, very fair question and I respect that.
Bill.
I was disappointed frankly with being faced with this last. What was, when was the high school meeting? I was, wasn't a participant, I was a member. But I know the two people involved and I was just disappointed. I would expect some type of meeting of minds before it got to. A resignation or before it even got to the ears of our superintendent. I'm disappointed that it didn't happen and I don't want to get into the details because then we're going to have a. I don't want to get into a pissing contest. So. Had there just yes or no, was there an attempt to come to some agreement or to some common. Understanding of what happened between the two of you before this went to the superintendent? Was there an attempt?
I'm not sure I'm following a, an attempt.
Did you approach the person that you wanted to call on their behavior? Did you approach that person and say, look, this bothers me, I don't understand why you did it?
I would have had that conversation and given the opportunity, but the genie was out of the bottle, so to speak, so.
But you had, you would have had the time had you waited before sending a letter of resignation and this is what bugs me. Quite honestly. Wait, count to 10. 10 hours, whatever, before sending in something so definitive that it brings another person in. Who's also interested in filling this position, who also, from what I understand from what Chris said and from. The background I know him, of him, is also qualified to be a responsible member of the board. So, this is like Peyton Place. Um, it, it shouldn't have happened and that's why if we're going to model, as you say. I'd expect adults that have a disagreement to meet in private. Reach some type of understanding and then that's it. If it has to go do something official, then you approach the chair and then the chair goes through to the superintendent. I'm disappointed in how this was handled and that's, yeah, that's what I would have expected. Thank you. And thank you both for being here, but. Thank you. You're right.
I mean, I don't, I don't think I have any specific questions, it does sound like people are very qualified to. Meet the needs of all of our students, so I appreciate you both being here, I think. Um, you know, I agree that it's. It's not productive to leave a place that you want to be to make a statement, but it's more productive to stay and try and have that conversation, but that's not really the question, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Chris.
Hi.
Uh, I'm curious, as you know, Mike was elected to this position, ran for the position, I think it was in. Mark.
Dutch. He ran on the post, didn't he?
Yeah, and was elected. And obviously you read the paper and saw the, the, the situation, you know, you heard the, the issue of the. The ethical standard, et cetera. I'm just curious if you knew that this other qualified member of the board who was elected. Wished to continue his service of the board, what motivated you to. To apply?
So I think in these kinds of situations, choice is a good thing for you folks and so. I felt like from a, as I had kind of said earlier. That there's. Kind of a civic obligation to serve if you feel like that you can contribute and contribute positively. So it's the combination of those two things and. I can't say that I, I did read the paper, but I didn't know to what degree. I didn't know, I didn't know Mike was going to be here, to be honest with you, I didn't know what I read in the paper, but, so. So I decided to throw my hat in the ring and, and give some possible options.
Good, one other question. What concerns me, obviously you understated your role as super, as principal of the high school for 25 years or whatever. As you know, after much. Work and effort, we have a brand new principal, head of the high school. And I think the, judging from the comments I've heard from the high school board. They're very excited about her new leadership, bringing that leadership to the board. And, and I think that my, the concern that I have is that. You would become the elephant in the room and, and the, and Kelly's opportunity to manage the. The enterprise. Uh, it's almost, I think it's almost going to be a challenge for, for some of the board members anyway, to say, well. You know, who's in charge?
Sure.
I mean, we've, we've had kind of similar experiences with Mr. Kiddy being on our board and dealing with.
Is he with us, bro? I, I wasn't going to say it.
We've, uh, Chris has been very helpful in pointing out many errors that Andy has made. And Andy has gratefully accepted those, even when occasionally they were errors on.
Sure.
But it's been an interesting dynamic, but I think this is a different plane to you, we got a brand new. Principal and then this. Elephant comes into the room, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm really concerned about, about the leadership of this new principal with you in the room.
Sure. Um, is there a question in that?
Yeah, that's, what, what do you think about that?
Okay, what do I think about that? I think that I am. Very optimistic about the potential for success for Kelly. And I would present myself as whatever kind of support she would need, but. My participation on the board will not be a, let's go down, you know. The, the path that Principal Hodgson followed. This will be Kelly's leadership opportunity and I'm happy to support that and. There will not, it will not be a. Extended session of, well, you know, back in the day, here's how we did things. If, if Kelly had questions, I, I would be receptive to those, but. I, I would, you would see me participate like a regular board member. Against the best, I would tell you.
I have one more question.
Yeah, another question?
For Chris.
Yeah, okay.
Chris, when you talked with us or talked about your interests. Would your interest go beyond the high school board? Would you be interested in serving on this board, say, in two years' time?
So the first thing I have to answer is, I, I want to see. I, I am trying to pace my time commitment to these kinds of opportunities and so I wouldn't rule it out. But I would have to. See how the high school board's time commitment plays against all the other things that I have on, so.
No, but I'm saying, should the high school board. Membership not work?
Oh, if I don't get this?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying, oh, oh, well then, yeah, I would have time available for that.
And you would have an interest in serving, let's say, on this board in two years?
Yeah.
Priscilla, if I, I just interject so everyone is aware, the way the statute reads. Is whomever you appoint to this position fills it until the next election.
Right.
Which is in March and then it becomes an open seat again. That either, if you appointed Mr. Stack, he would, he would have an opportunity to run, Mr. Hodgson had an opportunity to run, anyone from the community could run at that time.
And I was aware of that.
Right, no, I just.
No, but, thank you, thank you for building that.
On the high school board in March would involve this position that we're looking at tonight, because this will only go till March. It would be a one-year seat to fulfill the rest of that, but it has to be elected in March. Um, there will also be a two-year position and a three-year position available at the, at the high school level.
Well. What one do we fill?
Um, that one is up in March anyway. So that would be the two-year seat.
Oh, I see.
That will be open and then a three-year seat.
There are numerous positions coming up.
Yeah, and this would be a one-year seat. Next year to fulfill the rest of the commitment for that seat.
And it would have been, it would have been, had it been elected. Had it been a longer term.
It would have gotten done in another year, anyway. What changes do you foresee for schools in the future, Mr. Stack?
Priscilla, could you speak?
What changes do you foresee for schools in the future?
What changes?
Yeah.
Good question, I think. As I mentioned, we're at the, we're at the very tail end of a listening session to bring in a lot of input from the community. To answer some pretty important questions like, are we meeting the academic needs of all of our students? So that to me is a very important readout to provide to the, to the school, to the administration. And I was looking forward to getting more input from the consultant that Andy has hired. To do work to analyze the schedules and analyze, analyze really the, the allocation of resources across the pool. So the combination of those two pieces of data, I thought would probably have some implications for the tool. What that would be, to be honest with you, don't have all the data yet, so I, I can't give you an answer.
And to date, though, those have only involved businesses and community, it just hasn't involved anything as far as the. Future input or the, or the possibility of any of the variety of things where they go on in school, so. You mentioned Mark cautioning you, cautioning you about just one track and, and that's what I. Am seeing in what you just said.
I'm not sure if you remember, but Deb Cardane came in very early in the process and. After we had the board retreat, we spent a lot of time with Deb Cardane because of the result of Andy's recommendation. And made sure that we were coming at this from the perspective of. The school and the administration is responsible for the curriculum. And we're responsible for approving it, so it's not our job to establish the curriculum. But that doesn't mean that we can't become more educated about it and find out kind of what the community, what some of the stakeholders want. And provide that feedback to the school. The guidance has been invited, I think, three times now and for one reason or another, they haven't, Lord knows, PCB, et cetera. They haven't been able to make it, so we've tried to bring in a diverse. Set of speakers, the last speaker that we had lined up was Heather Glorious, who obviously works for the school. Is focused on the work-based effort, so we tried to get a diverse perspective. I actually thought it was kind of unique that we were bringing in people from the community, business leaders, we were bringing in students. So I thought that was actually pretty innovative and hadn't been done before, so I, I saw it as an opportunity to provide. A voice to the community, that was my objective.
Thank you, same question, Chris. What changes do you foresee for schools in the future?
So as much as it may seem like I was just there, and it's been, this is my third year of not being there. So before I can answer that, I have to come in just hear what's going on and kind of get some, in. An understanding of where the current administration's goals lie, so. I, I don't really have an answer for you right now, I'm going to have to come in and listen before I can answer that question.
But you've worked at the tech center and that's the one we send students to, right?
It's one of the two.
One of the two, all right. So you have, did that help with your perspective on schools or?
Um, I have always valued career and technical education and I know that the A O E is, is making a. A concerted push in that direction, all you have to do is watch the, all of the ads that are on the Channel 3 Morning News to see that. And I, I can't say that I would come to this position. With any more particular advocacy for career technical education than any other valid pathway for a student to go from ninth grade to graduation. Getting their needs met, so I think. So I think, uh, Bill's High School is and has always been a comprehensive high school that. Is designed to meet the needs as best as possible, all of the students that come in, um. But again, coming back to your question of changes, um. I would not venture again to answer that question without first knowing. What the current goals and priorities are and then, um, build off of that.
And stick to just like the typical article. I was meaning it as a more of a general question, okay?
That's a good question.
Sure.
Yeah, I see, so I'll start with Mike, um. What do you see the role of the high school being for girls? A lot of our children are girls. What do you think the high school should be doing to prepare them for life?
Um, honestly, I don't differentiate, um, so I think what we should be doing for boys, we should be doing for girls.
Yeah, but girls don't all wanna be plumbers and builders and.
Some do, I know some do, I know some do, I know some do. And a lot of them, and their parents want them to go to college.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a family decision and I. I think we should be allowing families to make those decisions about what's the right academic path for their, their students. Uh, I, I think that, you know, whether it's a, um, a, a four-year college prep program. Uh, whether it's a two-year, uh, college program or a. I think we should be providing the same opportunities for both sexes and. And, uh, I, I believe we're in a day and age where there is no differentiation, so I. I don't, I don't, I mean, I almost don't even think in terms of that. I think that. We should provide the same opportunity across the sexes. I, I, I think, you know, to be very candid, I don't. I don't, uh, I don't think in terms of sexes, in terms of opportunity. I think it's the same across the board. Uh, if somebody would point out to me that we were not doing that, I would definitely speak up and take action.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, so, um. I don't have a sense that, um, you know, within the past. Just go as far back as you'd like, that we have underserved either gender, um. But if we're talking, if, if your question is, how do we serve the female population and serve them well? Um, I think, again, really as Mike has said, we serve all students regardless of gender. When, as a comprehensive high school, we have the strongest possible academic programs. That, um, you know, fall within all of our resource constraints, whether that's budget, whether that's staff. Um, so we do the best we can with what we have available to us. But again, now speaking as a, a career center employee, while advocating again for all students. To, um, access those programs as well, um. And again, speaking from my, my current career center perspective, um, yes, you're right, it is a challenge. To have a di- a diverse, particularly a gender diverse, um, student population at the career centers. That's what we're working on right now, the diversity in, in all realms, but again, at career centers, there's, um. There are literally defined, um, programs which are recognized as underserving. Either gender, whether we're talking about health cares and, um. And early childhood education, which is almost predominantly female. Or, uh, constructions trades or manufacturing or automotive, which are almost exclusively male, um. So I think we need to make sure that, again, as a comprehensive high school. We're providing the best possible academic experience for all genders. And the best possible vocational career technical education experience for all genders.
I just have a question for Chris, um, clarification.
Yeah.
Chris, are you thinking of? Single gender classrooms for subjects like health? Where you're dealing with female health issues at a high school level? Because that's what occurred to me. If we're underserving one gender, is it? Uh, where the differences come in to obviously your health issues? Is, was that something you would think about?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I'm just curious, would you? How would you differentiate?
I'm a business and instructional, uh, practices are.
Are under the auspices of.
The administration and.
Well, that's true, but I was just curious if there was.
I, Bill, Bill.
Alright, alright.
What you're, I think what he's asked was, is that what you wanted them to answer? Um, but I, I think they've answered.
No, I wasn't asking about health curriculum at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any other questions? I'll be able to proceed.
Vote.
Okay. Okay, uh, Caitlin. Um. Mike. Bill?
Mike.
Chris?
I'm going to stay.
Yeah?
Mike.
Stay, okay, so Mike, you're the point number. I do hope that you will. Do some of the things that I'm going to ask you to do because I think that. To hold another member accountable when you're not is not fair. I'd say that too. Thank you.
Second, thank you for pointing your turn.
I would, um. Move to approve D twenty-two selection of library materials and D twenty-three selection of stuff that'll materials.
That'd be made.
Yes.
They seem pretty boilerplate.
They, they're based on our previous policy and our, the one from the, um, V S B A. So we kind of meshed them together, used some of our language and used, um, what was at the V S B A just supporting of those. So if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Caitlin, were you at that meeting? Yeah, yeah. Or Caitlin can answer those questions.
I like the, uh, I guess it's the library one, which. It was reporting all books being available and no books being banned.
Hopefully we don't have to get into that situation. Uh, they're in your, in your packet, so, um. We first. It is the policy at the top, it's, it's the one, uh, there. Chris, I, I apologize too, I didn't say thank you for coming. Do a grant for one of those seats in, in March. Right. You have to write credentials as well. Okay, um, we moved the. Yeah.
Learning agreement.
Yes, we pulled out. Okay, are you, is everybody comfortable with them? Does anybody have any questions? Okay, so, alright, let's vote. Just give me a thumbs up if you are in favor. Okay, everybody's in favor. Alright, done, uh. The M, the F M S Cherry Hill green space usage, um, Chris, would you speak to that, please?
It got more complicated the more research I knew, so just to. Try to explain this clearly, when Rocky Ann purchased the green space up on Cherry Hill, uh. The person who owned the apartment building, decided that. Asked if they could have a tenant parking space there. Which was not, it's not a problem, uh, they needed one, uh, there was no, nothing but street to park on anyway. And we weren't gonna use it, uh, the way the space worked out, that, you know, just the fence. Naturally, it's what where it is, it left the parking space. Uh, however. Probably, since there's this crazy law in Vermont where if you don't. Read assert your ownership periodically. Uh, with a letter. Probably a lawyer needs to write a letter to the current owner, who I think is a different owner, that, uh. When I went into the. And looked at the tax map and I didn't recognize the name on that apartment anymore.
I think it's every fifteen years.
Yeah.
It has, it has to be, has to be done for.
The other, so that would be just a letter that says. Uh, we know you're using it, but it's still ours and we still maintain our ownership of it. That's probably the easiest thing. The other thing I guess a lawyer might tell you is, well, you could give the person a license, you know, which is kind of a legal. The license to use that, which again, does the same thing, you know, uh.
Uh, I, I, I was thinking that we might not wanna go license because as you change. The tenant that's there. If, if you've given him a license, then we might have to redo something right then, whereas the letter can just be passed on.
And I would think was a letter, I mean, with either you'd wanna say, well, just to know it's properly maintained and there's no trash and. It's okay to use, that would be my suggestion, but maybe a lawyer still wants to draw, draft a letter, I'm thinking.
I'm ready to voice.
I think I agree with Chris, but, you know, a letter to the, uh, to the current owner, leaving it clear that. They're, we own it and they are allowed to use it so long as they go and use it.
So do we want our clerk to, um, just draft a quick small letter and then kind of run it by the? Or have Andy just take care of the whole thing? Some people.
I would think you'd want a lawyer to write it, you know, yeah.
So, and, so, um, it is the consensus of the board, I think. That Andy, if you would take care of that for us, please? Thank you.
We'll do something.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and the parking at Central, I put the parking at Central on there because in the past, um, we have done, uh, we've offered. And allowed Parks Place to use it for, for a dollar in exchange for using their spaces. For our meeting system, however, we are currently being charged for those, those. Usages, so I'm, and I think our central school staff really needs that parking spaces. Um, we have been parking on the street, so there's no reason that. Parks Place can't park on the street instead of us and allow us to be using our, what we used to use as a playground.
Like, what are we, what are we paying for now?
Uh, Andy, do you have an answer, how, how much they're charging us?
I have no idea, I, I.
Who's charging you?
I just.
Parks Place charges us if we do a conference at their, at their office.
Oh, well.
So, so we, we rent space. At Parks Place, uh, that's you to utilize for testing or for other purposes and so. Um, I, I wasn't aware of any agreement as far as parking. And, and offsetting of, of costs or anything of that nature. I heard that Parks Place. Was allowed to use our parking lot, but that's all I knew, so, um, I didn't know that. Employees of Park Space or visitors to Park Space, Parks Place was. Meaning that our staff didn't have parking. I assumed. I guess, whatever, you know, based on the assumption, but that I assume that. It was because we had plenty of parking and we were gonna give up some of our parking, so. I can, I can definitely speak with Parks Place, so.
I, I, I think, I think. We ought to have a conversation with Parks Place. I know Parks Place. And Central have collaborated since the very beginning of Parks Place. And, uh, the principal at, at Central at the time was very instrumental, as, as was the superintendent of schools, I believe, in setting. Up Parks Place. Uh, it has, Parks Place has a ball building, uh, clearly and, um, uh. Does not have, uh, any means of having parking on the street park.
Right.
So I think the, uh, it would be hopeless to. Uh, to, uh, make sure that we're not, we're not going to, uh, put them out of business in a sense of, uh. Uh, the support, the financial support. Uh, this quote rental, I think has gone on since day one. Uh, and I don't think that's critical to their future. I don't, I don't think the. I don't think we should be paying, they should, we should be paying them for parking places, uh, but I, I also thought.
We're not paying for parking, so they're, they were supposed to be allowed to park there in exchange for allowing us to use their building. But they have been charging us last year and this year.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
For our use of the building.
Well, then we are.
Okay, which is why I'm saying we really need it because our people are now on the, parking on the street. We have more, um, coming to that building because we now have the three and four-year-olds there. And we need spaces for parking, so, um. To me, there's no agreement. We have an agreement for, this, this would be our second year of not having an agreement. Cause we had none last year.
We should have an agreement.
So. I don't know whether we wanna have the discussion or what we wanna do, but I mean, I think we do need the parking. For our people, so I don't know where we wanna go with it, it's.
Well, I don't think we should make a decision tonight. I think it should be, I think it should be researched and, and, and set, uh. Somebody sit down with the director.
It's never come to my attention that we had a parking issue at.
I didn't think.
It's not a law, until it was on the agenda.
We added the parking behind the school when we bought that house and tore it down. And I think the combination of the street parking and that parking was sufficient, but. I don't know, I mean, obviously we have to look at.
We also have the problem in the winter of coming down from, from there and people falling a lot of the time, so we've gotta. Take that into consideration as well.
I'm not aware of any claims of people falling on that hill, so I just want, I just wanna be clear, I, I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying. This is the first I've heard of a parking issue at Central Elementary in, I'm going on year six.
Okay. But I mean, it also would hinge on maybe that. Working out something where we're not paying for.
I agree.
Their facilities with, you know, when they've been doing this, so that's something for you to talk, maybe talk with them or. Carrie to talk with them and see where we're at.
Well, again, I think, I think the S U utilizing, and we've been very fortunate to be able to access Parks Place. Um, we were, you know, during COVID times, it was very helpful for some of our families who. Um, school can be, the actual building can be a barrier to, um, engaging them. Uh, Parks Place has been, uh, a valuable asset for that purpose. Um, so I guess I would, and, and we pay a nominal rent, I mean, for that space and it gives us more. So, you know, so if there's extra space available, we can actually access it, um. So I guess I. Would like an opportunity to speak with Parks Place, you know, and also with Carrie, uh, just about. Where the concerns are and how we can work out, uh, you know, some echo. Uh, agreement that's amicable to everybody, so.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a community resource center and it's, uh, it, it plays a role, an important role. My wife used to be, be on full disclosure, my wife was the president. And been on the board, she no longer is, but, uh, for many years, and it's a, uh, it's an important community resource, so. And I'm not sure about link, trying to link parking with paying for the space. I, I don't think the two are connected.
Well, that's what I was trying to say. One is the S U and one is Rockingham, and I want to try and keep them very separate because it's not Rockingham that's renting a space at, at, at that facility. It's the S U. And you know, I, I can remember back when, when Chris Pratt was the superintendent and he was asking me about it. I when I had first come on, I didn't even know we had access to that space. I mean, so he told me, I was like, oh, we've been looking for our space. Good. So then we started utilizing it, so. But then COVID hit, as I said, but it still was helpful in that sense. But I guess I'd just like to talk, you know, be able to talk to the director there and and gain a full understanding of where their concerns are.
Thanks. So what is that, what the board would like to happen? Okay, all right. So if you do that, that would be great. Do we want to discuss the property at School Bus Depot Road or put that off till next time? It's already seven, seventeen?
I have no idea what that's even about.
Well, I can just give you the information that we the town, the, the Rockingham School District owns seven point five acres off of Golden Hill Road. It's, I was wrong. It wasn't Skeba's Depot. Skeba's Depot loops around
That's around.
Of one oh three and Golden Hill plunges down to the river.
Golden Hill, yeah.
Yeah. And the land is off to the left as you go down that hill. One of the fergits is in the butter there, and I'm not sure which one it is. Anyway, a a woman bequeathed, I believe, this land to the school district in the early nineteen hundreds. So we've owned it for a long time. Maybe at the time, because there was a School Bus Depot, and I don't know what the building situation was, maybe the thought was, well, there could be a school out there someday, or, you know, it was a long time. We tried once to sell it and we, we failed to do it. But but it, it might be worth trying to contact a realtor and try to sell it again, just to, because we're never going to use it. It's not on the tax roll. Somebody might as well own it. And then property is a little more.
Yeah, it's more, more attractive.
Yeah, at this point. So.
I think that makes sense. I.
It's a little complicated selling property as a school board because we have to get the electric to a breeze. So you want to kind of time it for the annual meeting.
So this would be a good time.
So we probably should check out.
We have a little.
What it is and look at it and do that. So thank you for.
Sorry, dark system.
Information.
Agents and see.
Yeah.
I need you to start that process.
Yeah, I'll give you the name of the person. We worked with this piece up here.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the director's comment. Caitlin.
Oh wait, I'm sorry. You had the, I mean, you had half the Vietnam discussion that you added.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. I've got it on the other sheet here. The Vietnam POWs discussion, would you just give us a little bit of information on that bill? And discussion at Rockingham Library on Thursday fourth at seven P M.
This is a half hour slideshow talk that I've been wrapping probably for the last eight or nine months because twenty twenty-three is the fiftieth anniversary of Operation Homecoming nineteen seventy-three, when the North Vietnamese, as part of a peace accord agreement through Henry Kissinger, released half of the POWs that they held. This did not include the POWs being held by Laos nor by Cambodia. Subsequently, the peace accord was broken when we failed to come up with humanitarian aid for the North Vietnamese. And there's really no, it, it's, it's an interesting story, very sobering about how our government works and sometimes how good intentions fall through the cracks. So this discussion is going to basically cover nineteen forty-five, the end of World War Two, the situation in Vietnam as a French colony, and go up to nineteen seventy-five, the fall of Saigon, and look at the situation with American POWs. That's going to be on this Wednesday after your open house at seven P M at the library. And it's thirty minute slideshow presentation with fifteen minute question and answer. It's going to, like I said, cover up to the fall of Saigon in seventy-five. And then there's going to be a subsequent slide talk on the first Wednesday of December, again at the library at seven P M. And we're basically going to look at three approaches that were used in trying to get our POWs back. One was, again, through bribing officials with humanitarian aid. Okay, which was tried in Laos. A mission, covert mission, military mission to steal them back. That was also tried in Laos. And then unfortunately for the vast majority, they were ignored and reports or sightings of actual American POWs were buried through different levels of whoever the sovereign administration was empowering at the time. So two part, before the fall of Saigon and then after after the fall of Saigon, up until about nineteen ninety-two, when the sightings and the evidence stopped coming in and most of these guys, maybe up to a thousand of them had died in captivity. And everyone is welcome. It's, I like history and this is why I thought it's kind of it's not ancient history, but it's close enough to our consciousness or should be because we've had other dealings like in Afghanistan. And I just want to share what I found out because I don't want us to go through another Vietnam. I don't want us to go through another Afghanistan. Where we gain nothing, we've lost people, we've lost resources that could, could have been put to much better use.
Thanks, Phil. That's Wednesday night until the fourth at seven P M at the library. Okay, thank you. Director's comments. Caitlin?
I just want to say, I know they left, but thank you to both of the candidates again. I know we've done this now a couple of times and I really appreciate, I think, what Chris said, struck me about if you are available and you have the knowledge and the interest in this. It's really wonderful to be involved. I mean, I ran out of post, which I appreciate because I'm like being here and being a part of it. But I do think that choice is a good thing and having more people involved in our school community and supporting it is a good thing. So just appreciate everyone who shows interest in doing that.
Bill?
I want to apologize for my strong language. But I was frustrated then. I'm still a little frustrated now that this came before us and that this was not resolved face to face. That's all. Thank you.
Chris? Yeah.
I'm just delighted to hear that my principals think it's been going on well at the beginning of the school year and we have great expectations for, for a good school year. So thank you for all your efforts.
And I would echo all of your thoughts and say that I appreciate every one of you and every one of your input and your ideas. And I appreciate our principals and their everything they do for the schools and Andy as well. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV. Keeping Government Honest.